We'll call to order the Thursday, September 9th, 2021 meeting of the Clive City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Sircena.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Thank you.
Nice to have everybody present and accounted for. Welcome, everybody here in the chambers with us. Nice to see everybody on a beautiful night. Thank you for spending your time with us. And if you'd all please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. The next item is approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Move through.
John seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Okay, none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Agenda is approved. Okay, so next on the agenda is citizen presentation. This is where anyone in the chambers can address the council on an item that is not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody here to do that?
For folks who are participating online, you can get my attention if you'd like to speak by using the raise hand function. If you're using a video or if you're on your phone, you can press star six to raise your hand and then star nine to unmute yourself.
I see we have, we have one. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Lila Starr, 1614 Northwest 99th Court. Just wanted to make an announcement that we're having a Clive City Council forum on Tuesday evening. It's coming up Tuesday, very close by here at Steamboat Boys in Clive. Very pleased to know that all the council members have responded to our invitation to join us that evening, except for Mr. Klein. I understand you'll be out of town. We're sorry to hear that. But we're very grateful for your agreement to participate and we look forward to having a good dialogue with you. I have some flyers about the event if anybody's interested and we look forward to having a really great event. Thanks.
Good, well, appreciate your engagement and thank you very much. Is, is there anybody else here to address the council item that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to consent items.
Move the resolution.
Okay. Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? Passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, now we have a number of presentations, some life-saving award presentations, and we have, we have an introduction. So we're going to start with, let's see, I think the first life-saving award I'm showing is Chief Rowe. Anyway.
I think we're splitting, we're splitting the duties here tonight, sir.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Your honor, counsel, it's my great pleasure tonight to do our first award presentation for life-saving. First, I'd like to get some of the involved people to come up. Officer Odessa Clark is here. Odessa, could you stand up here and maybe face the, face the crowd? Officer Brian Kepnick, I believe, is joining us on Zoom tonight. He's currently off getting trained with his canine partner, so he could not be with us tonight. Couple bystanders, Ryan Parker and Greg Stice, I believe at least one is here. Could you, would you come up and, thank you, gentlemen, come up and stand beside Officer Clark? And most important, our survivor, Pete Sullivan and his wife Shelley are here also. Hope to come up and join us. Thank you. Back on May 28th, at 2165 108th Street, about 8:30 a.m., an adult male, Mr. Sullivan, collapsed from a sudden cardiac arrest at Combined Systems Technology. Bystander Rick Parker helped move the patient to the floor, activated 911, and directed coworker Greg Stice to perform CPR per directions being relayed through Westcom, our communications system. Clive police officers Brian Kepnick and Odessa Clark arrived, took over CPR, applied an AED and delivered shocks as indicated. EMS then arrived, another shock was administered and our patient regained a pulse. And I'm very pleased tonight to present this group of people, our citizens that jumped in, our officers that responded to help and we're very grateful, I'm sure not as grateful as you, but very, very grateful you could be here this evening. And mayor, if you'd like to come down and present the awards with Chief Rowe.
Okay, very good. Well, first of all, congratulations on your strength and for being here and I'm glad that you came. We're grateful to have these events, but sometimes our survivors don't help. So it's nice to have you here. Congratulations and Godspeed to you and to you, young lady, as well.
Well, thank you for hiring these guys.
I love these guys. I'm sure I'm going to show your hand. Thank you. Thank you for a great job. And I know that you've been presenting already, so again, thank you and appreciate everything. I'm going to present this coin to you and thank you for your heroic actions. Congratulations, thank you. And the same to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for everybody's edification, it's really our honor to do these events. We're so grateful to be able to do them. Our citizens, our men and women in uniform, help our community survive. And so this is just wonderful to be able to do this. Thank you all for being here. I know we have one more.
Yep, Chief Rowe is going to take that one.
But we're just so grateful to be able to do these. So thank you all and let's give these folks a round.
Thanks, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, before I present the next one, if I could, mayor, I do have at least two people here from our Life Saving Awards Committee and they put in a lot of time, they put in a lot of scrutiny of these awards to make sure that they really stand up to the scrutiny and that they're really meaningful. We've got Brian Costa and Rob Matier in the crowd. I just want to recognize them for their efforts in all these awards that we evaluate. So, thank you, Tony. For this award, it happened back on May 13th on 159th Street. And I know we've got from the Engine 220 crew that day, Bob Monson and Scott Swetel. You guys will go ahead and come up here. Jordan Hendrick was going to join us. He's actually on duty tonight and I'm assuming that he is on a call, so we will catch up with him separately. And we had a bystander, Neil Wang. And is Neil here? He's not here yet, so we'll catch up with him separately. A little bit about the event, there was an adult male that was found unresponsive from a potential drug overdose. The neighbor was summoned and he came and did CPR until the arrival of the Engine 220 crew. And Engine 220, I should say, the bystander was given CPR instructions by Westcom. And on both of these calls, the Westcom dispatchers had a very integral part of that. They were presented awards recognized separately by Westcom. So I want everybody to know that they've received their due reward. So 220 got there and continued CPR up until the point that the patient regained consciousness. Eventually, an Urbandale crew, an ambulance came and transported the ambulance. But it was truly CPR that saved the life of this person. And Captain Monson and I were visiting before the meeting and he was describing sometimes when you see a patient in that kind of condition, you just, I mean physically, you give them all the hope in the world, but mentally, they really look like it's going to be an impossible task to save this person. And they worked hard and they did it. And that person is alive today because of that and proud to, proud to recognize these. Mayor?
I give the same deal. Thank you very much for your heroic actions and for your incredible, incredible work. Appreciate it very much. Chief has mentioned a couple of things here. It's the relationship with our Westcom dispatch facility that really helps manage and work with our first responders to make them the most effective that they can be. Probably one of the most successful collaborations, regional collaborations that we've seen in our history. And you two gentlemen are just one more example of how strong that is. Thank you. We're just blessed to have you. You guys shine every day and really, really make a difference. So let's give these two gentlemen a round.
Well, there's, there's a couple of things that my colleagues up here on the council probably get tired of hearing me say. Over the years, it's a great day in Clive when a ribbon gets cut. It's a great day in Clive when we do a life-saving award presentation. Thank you to all who are here to support us tonight. So a great job by all. Thank you, chiefs. And now we, we have an introduction. The introduction of Public Works Operations Specialist Kevin Brown. Jeff is gonna, is gonna lead us in that.
Mayor, councilman. Glad to be here tonight to introduce you to our, to our latest public works employee that comes to us through a retirement of a 30-year employee and a subsequent promotion. Kevin Brown comes to us with some experience with the city of Des Moines and the sewer department there before I came to the city of Des Moines. But he comes highly recommended from someone I know there and I was very pleased to have the opportunity to bring him on board. Since then, he's been in Green Bay for many years, coming back to the area. His wife works for the city of Waukees and we're very proud to have someone with some public works experience and bringing them aboard here. So with that, I introduce you, Kevin Brown.
Kevin, welcome. Welcome. I'm glad to say a few words if, if you don't mind.
I'm excited to be here. Like I said, I'm originally from the Des Moines area, so it's coming home for me. Over 30-some years in, in public service, so hopefully I can bring a lot of positive things and help out the guys that are here that may need it in the future, so.
Well, welcome. Welcome back, I should say.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome to the team. We'll look forward to working alongside you and not literally working alongside you.
Big shoes to fill, 30-year retirement. You've got 30 years from here to go.
We're glad to have you. So again, thank you for saying a few words and for being with us tonight and best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Okay, thanks all. We'll move now to action items. The first one is a public hearing regarding the underground electric easement to Mid-American Energy Company. And Matthew, do we post appropriate public notice?
Public notice was published in the Des Moines Register on September 3rd, 2021.
Thank you, Matthew. Doug?
Now this will work. What's in front of you tonight is a request from Mid-American Energy for consideration of the granting of an underground electric service line easement across a portion of the city's property along Warrior Lane, within the yellow-bound property on the exhibit. That is our future green belt space along that particular corridor. The easement that they are requesting is only 10 foot wide by 150 feet approximately. So although it's outlined in red on that exhibit, again, you can see it's very small along that west boundary. The need for Mid-American Energy is due to build out of the electrical distribution system in this area, going from what was a rural system of above-ground pole mount to an underground system that will support both our development and the future development on the other side of the street in Waukees. They anticipate getting this construction underway this fall, winter, in support of the new homes that'll be going in next spring. With that, I'd be happy to answer any question, but staff would recommend approval of the granting of the easement.
Questions for Doug, council?
I've moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Susan to close the public hearing. Before we do so, is there anybody here to speak on this item, either with us or virtually as well?
See the hands going up, your honor?
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Seeing no discussion, will the council please vote? Passes five to zero to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution granting the easement.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Susan. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? And that passes five to zero. Thank you, Doug. All right, second action item tonight is a resolution approving the Clive 2021-2026 strategic plan. And Matt?
Thank you, your honor. Tonight, as is normal procedure, following all the hard work that you all did along with the management team in August, is the updated 2021-26 strategic plan, which specifically outlines the council's top and high priorities for both our policy and management agenda for the coming 12 months. Happy to report that staff has already started working on a number of these items and you will see actions coming forward here probably as early as next month. Maybe even sooner, maybe even the next meeting and some of the items that you see that you've listed as priorities in terms of getting those action items moving forward per the council's guidance. Included in the packet is a number of summary documents that Lyle Summick and his team put together to kind of summarize all the efforts that, that you all did through the multiple workshops. Really excited to put this before you for your approval and then our plan is then to share it with the community through our various communication means and our website, that this is the, kind of the work plan for the next 12 months and to achieve the city's overall strategic plan and vision goals the council has for the community. So with that, your honor, be happy to answer any questions, but staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Matt. Questions for Matt, council?
Move the resolution.
It's moved by Eric, seconded by John. Is there any discussion? Ted, do you have anything?
Yeah, I did have a quick question. Hey, Matt, are you going to put together that kind of cheat sheet, color-coded cheat sheet on this?
I am and actually will, I have completed that. Going through a few, a few edits just to make sure I've got everything right in there. But yes, that will be the document that we will use to track our progress and be reporting back to you on a quarterly basis on that progress. But I will, I've got that, I think, pretty much done. I will share that with you all in my weekly update tomorrow.
That's the word you're looking for, Matt.
Yeah, it's like the big spreadsheet that has all the, yep.
And a big spreadsheet it is because there's a lot of priorities and there's a lot of things that we're working on. I'm just going to add before we vote, this is a process that has served us well and this is for the record. We've done it for a number of years now annually. We used to do it semiannually when we started it a decade ago. And it has continued to serve us well and guide us and keep us all communicating and on the rails together. While we don't always agree on everything, we politely disagree, but we, we, we establish our agenda and our plan. We're able to come away with something very meaningful that gives us the guidance that we need with so many things going on to make a difference in what we're all doing. I think that's what we're all here to do is to make a difference. So very, very pleased with this plan once again. And Matt, thank you and Lyle and to our department heads for really coming together and making it all possible. So seeing nothing further, will the council please vote? And that passes five to zero. Thank you all for your hard work. And I think that, again, for the public, you know, this is something that we, you know, it's a full week with staff and then, you know, something on the order of about one and a half full days with council and department heads. And so that's, you know, half-day sessions, sitting around the table and really, and really working through every line item. So it's a process. It takes a lot of work and a lot of organization and, you know, this council's committed to that work and that effort and that process. And so again, just very, very pleased with, with that. So thank you all. Okay, we'll move to reports now. Pete?
Thank you, your honor. We'll be using your, our, all of our communication platforms to tell that story of strategic, of strategic planning. Some of the first opportunities will be with the September Economic Newsletter. They'll be going out at the end of the month and it'll be the feature also in part of the October Utility Newsletter as well. And we'll get it up on our front page of the cityofclive.com as a, as a news story. In the, later this month, we'll be coming back to the council with another presentation from our partners at HDR to talk about Water Resources Master Plan. The big topic for that presentation will be looking at the financial models, sort of one, two, three, four different options that use the powerful Econ H2O tool that HDR has developed, plugging in a number of the decisions that this council has already made or suggested that they want to see it work and see how it all works out. We'll be handling that tool and then setting ourselves up to make some decisions about how we want it to ultimately be represented in the final plan that we will be completing later this fall and then begin implementing as well. So we're excited to bring that to the group and hopefully get you to you, not just as, because it is a tool that's a little bit more intelligible if you get to handle it some. So we'll look for a way besides just slides for you all to be able to get into that and see the numbers and see how choices affect each other when we're talking about the utility rate and other financial considerations for water resources. Couple other important stories that are on the horizon. One, the Canine Unit. Once Brian's done with his training with Dutch, we'll have Dutch down here and I'm sure he'll be an all-star. He already has earned a lot of praise from the community and we look forward to Brian getting around to a number of different parts of Clive so he can tell the story of why this unit's important and why Dutch is a great addition to the force. Later this month, we're working on setting up a Clark Street meeting to give the community, specifically that neighborhood, especially the folks who live right along Clark Street, an update on where we are through construction season 2021 and what we'll have ahead of us in 2022. Some of that story for those residents is going to be affirmation, confirmation of things that they already know, that some of the work this summer took a little bit longer than what was anticipated. I want to give credit to our public works team, though. They've done a nice job on site, staying in good communication with those folks and answering questions and making sure that this is a disruptive process. Our public works team, I think, has done a nice job making sure that those disruptions are known, but they aren't surprises and are helping people get through them as best they can. So once we've got a specific date and time for that, we'll be sure to let the council know. We're going to try and do it out at Clark Street, weather permitting, so we can be outside and spread people out. If that doesn't work out, though, we'll be over at the special events building for Green Belt Landing. Our preparations for the ribbon cutting of the new Clive Public Safety Center are, is well underway. We're working on our keepsake for folks who will be coming and the program and invitations as well. We're working with a local Clive business, Cinnamon Ross, who I think many of you know, our chamber president. She's doing a number of the design pieces for us and we'll be getting those out the door here quickly. So folks, at the very least, have to save the date. They know where to be on November 18th, 19th? 18th, good. I didn't get it that wrong. Not real encouraging when we're talking about to save the date and, you know, start throwing around the wrong number. The 18th. So please watch for more information on that. Finally, we did submit all of our application materials for the Voice of the People Awards, which we were nominated for. Matt will be finding out or all of us will be finding out. And then if we're successful with those awards, Matt will be receiving those on behalf of the city when he is at the ICMA conference in Portland, Oregon. So it's just a matter of weeks. We're feeling confident that we'll have at least one of those to bring home. That's all I have, your honor.
Outstanding, Pete. Thank you. Council questions for Pete, if you have anything?
He says that's all, like it was, yeah, it was nothing.
Thank you, Pete. Appreciate it. Ted, we'll move down to you.
Nothing to nightmare.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, sorry, Ted.
Obliged, Mike.
Eric, how about you?
A couple of things. One, last week, attended a ribbon cutting for a new business in Clive, the DB and T Bank. So as the mayor said, it's always a great day in Clive when we can cut a ribbon. And also today, joined by Councilman McCoy, Councilwoman Judkins at the Chamber Luncheon, sponsored by Dart. Great presentation, Mike, on Dart and some of the great things you folks are doing right there. So good luncheon today with the Clive Chamber.
Outstanding. Thank you, Eric.
Nothing tonight?
Just a couple of things, just back to the ribbon cutting at Dubuque Bank and Trust back last Thursday. Just a nice event, I think really well-attended. I really applaud our chamber. They do a great job with these events and Kristy really, well, I tell you what, she's, she's right on the detail and the timing and really does just a fantastic job. We, so we welcome a new bank to our family of banks in the city of Clive and, you know, they have one exception and that is they have a rooftop garden that I don't think anybody else has. So it's a, it's a pretty nice facility that they've done and it really is a part of that, that development that really has quite a history and a story in terms of how we got there. So a lot of fun to participate in that one. Labor Day, Historical Society had, had their ice cream social and it was a beautiful day for it. And, you know, Swanson Park really looks good. They've done a great job and, and our crews, of course, do a great job helping to maintain that facility. And then, and then lastly, for, for me, last night, we had our Metro Mayor's Mile Group Dinner. And, you know, we talked a lot about stormwater management with our friends from Waukees and Urbandale and others that were, that were around the table. And I would, I guess I would, I share that from the standpoint that I know that we're talking about, how do we communicate with our neighbors and get people on board? And I think that there's a, there's a spirit to do that. And so now we just have to start to execute on some of those things. So enjoyed that very much. Susan?
Well, just two things. Another note on the Clive Historical Society, they are looking for board members. So if you have anyone to recommend, that would be welcome. Don't have to live in Clive, but ideal to have an interest in history. So keep that in mind. And then I attended this morning's Finance Committee for Bravo. And once again, revenues are looking a little bit uncertain. And so there was conversation about what to do about that with the various cultural partners. There weren't any lost during the past year. We still have 65 eligible to apply for grants, but this will be a kind of a light grant cycle, which is concerning because right now we're not hearing about PPE or other types of programs that can step up with a backfill. So be aware, support your favorite organizations, I guess.
Well, maybe this is more of a question for Eric. Are we getting a sense on hotel motel revenues and convention revenues?
Yeah, you know, down, they were, things were trending up right there from CBB perspective. Now we're kind of hitting, you know, we were right in stride, too. There's some really positive things coming out with how we're looking at in this particular quarter. You know, we're falling back with the COVID and certainly the Delta variant right there is, is cut back travel a little bit. But I think they're still optimistic. We just need to ride out this next few months.
Yeah, some of these events are still happening, but.
They are still happening. We're seeing some concerts, we're seeing some concerts, you know, canceled, but there are events going on.
Yeah, well, to be determined. Does anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Before we leave, just to follow up, Mac, Metro Advisor Council, will have Sally there Tuesday to give an update. So at our next meeting, I should be able to have even more details of what she's reporting, but I think it could be similar to what you've said and what Eric said. It's gonna be a challenging year yet.
Yeah.
Out of the woods, unfortunately. Michael, anything for the group?
Two quick things. One, the event was great. Back on to Kristi, she did a fantastic job today for the luncheon and that event. DART did sponsor it, and I had the opportunity to speak on behalf of DART. Really, for this board's sake, a couple of the things that we should keep watching is DART's heard you, Clive, and others about, you know, rightsizing the buses and the routes and such. They are trying out some new pilot programs, like a micro transit system, also a last-mile transit with Uber and some taxis are happening right now in Urbandale instead of full routes. And then also that micro transit, which is going to be really interesting, it's going to launch in Ankeny as its first pilot here in a month or so, run fares at a dollar, get you to your location, work, grocery store, what have you. Where a little different, that last-mile Uber taxi one is, it gets you to your next kind of the hub, right? So used to go up next to the Buccaneer Stadium and such arena. Now you're in that zone, you can call an Uber, and DART will subsidize that to get you to the church up on Meredith, which is kind of their hub. So lots of new ideas they're trying out, right? For the last three or four years, different suburbs have been asking for a different model, and it's happening. So that's, that's good to see happening. WRA, the one thing I just mentioned is a lot of talk about Grimes and WRA and how they're fitting into this. They joined, as you know. And so what I'd like to ask staff, if they could, is kind of come back with a report and show if Grimes were not to go through with this, what would the rate increases be or the savings disappear that not only Clive but other cities would be getting from Grimes joining? They're having some trouble getting through between Urbandale area, don't know what it is, but they can't get trunks in. I think you alluded to it a little bit, not the problem, but the trunk, making a larger trunk, we'd be the beneficiary as well as everybody downstream. But there's been a two-to-three-year holdup, and I've been getting several phone calls of being the, on the exec board for WRA lately about this issue, which kind of took me off guard. So I think we need to get ahead of it and look at it to what Clive's side of this is so we can be prepared to, as we're talking to our neighbors on other issues, that maybe we could bring this one up as well if it makes sense for us, right? Dollars and cents, but, okay. And as you all know, I mean, I think the trouble is, Urbandale is not a member of WRA. It's their, at least it's...
Sanitary sewer district, yeah.
Which is separate from the city itself. So it's like a Water Works versus City Council.
Separate levy that they don't show as part of their...
Correct.
Just saying.
And that's part of the complexity for this one, for sure, because there is, the city is involved in negotiations on it, because there is, we'll call it annexation interests also being engaged in this conversation, where the city's involved with the USSD. So, yep, we'll come back with a...
Again, not to get too much in it, but yeah, the annexation piece is just a strange, I know enough to be dangerous tonight, but it's, Urbandale wants to annex some of Grimes, Grimes says, take it. Urbandale says, well, you make them come here. And they say, we can't forcefully annex somebody to a different city. You know, we can't say we're annexing you to go. I did raise my hand, said we'd take that pocket, but they said it was an island. I said, so? There's some laws about that or something like that. Anyways, that's all. If we could just get a little report on that.
Good stuff. Any questions for Mike? Councilmember Weaver, do you have any questions for Mr. McCoy?
No, I'm good, thank you.
It's a wide-open opportunity right here.
I can drop by later if you do.
Alley-oop.
Adam, council, anything for the group?
Yeah, just a few updates tonight. To follow up on, Pete's mentioned about the ribbon cutting in November. What we're also going to try to do here in early October is also get you all out for another tour of the facility. There's a lot more to see out there. The site's a little messy right now with a lot of paving work going on, messy in a good way, not muddy messy, but we're getting a lot of paving down and a lot of rock getting put down, so that'll definitely feel more complete in a quick time period here. We'll have the Facilities Committee out there next week, so a week from tomorrow. But yeah, hoping to hear in October, once we've got a lot more to show, and you'll see a lot more finishes inside. Excited to show the council on the progress that's being made there. Again, everything continues to move forward. We haven't had any significant delays at this point on equipment or anything, and we'll just, I'll just keep knocking on wood as I say that for the next two months, as this is the busy time where things get a little more frantic when you get towards the end. Also wanted to mention, too, and follow up to life-saving awards, today is a week from today, we'll have another one that we're doing with one of our largest Clive businesses with Willis, Willis Lexus, because one of the Willis boys was actually a part of that life-saving event. So I know I've shared some information on that, but excited to do that in a week at 11:00 AM over at Willis Lexus. Also wanted to make, and I'll mention all these items in my weekly update to you in terms of September is Suicide Awareness Month, and Clive Behavioral Health is doing a walk for that, associated with the NAMI Walk that's going on this month for mental, mental health on Friday, September 24th at 1:30, and it's basically a walk down to City Hall and back from their facility. And so they've invited us, and you'll have, I'll have some more information for you and my update tomorrow and more to come on that. So just wanted to make you aware of those, some of those key dates. And then finally, with our, one thing I wanted to mention with the strategic planning approval tonight, we're getting in the midst now of kicking off our CAIP and budget processes. And one key thing that staff wants to do is make sure we're reflecting those priorities and those CIPs and budgets that'll be proposed to you later this year and early next year. So those processes are kicking off at a staff level right now. And then lastly, we'll be taking in and understanding what potential impacts there may be from President Biden's announcement here this, later, earlier this evening, related to some changes that are coming down from the, at least the federal administration that may impact certain operations at the city in terms of vaccine mandates. We'll see, know that it'll be going through a rulemaking process for that, but just something to put on your radar was, especially, I think, one of the elements that he mentioned in his speech was vaccine requirements for any healthcare provider that receives funding from Medicare or Medicaid. Just know that, obviously, our ambulance services, the most, the largest revenue that we receive from ambulance billing is with Medicare. So again, I understand that'll be just announced today, and there'll be, need to be rulemaking associated with that, the speed of which of how that will happen, I do not know yet, but just wanted to put that on the council's radar, that we'll be evaluating that as more information comes out. Pete's already actually reached out to the Iowa League of Cities to see what they know, and so we'll share that information as we receive it. That's all I have, Your Honor, unless you have any questions for me.
Questions for Matt, council? Matt, thank you. Lot to cover, a lot in front of us, so appreciate that. Matthew, anything else on the correspondence front for us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Matthew. Counsel, anything else for the good of the order?
I should have mentioned that I do plan to go to the Iowa League of Cities Conference next week.
That is next week, yes. Good, thanks, Susan. Anything else for the good of the order?
I'm trying to think of some things, because I just don't feel right leaving at 6:39. Chief is glaring at me, so nothing, sir.
One thing for the chief to mention is, it's the next meeting that we'll have Dutch here, right?
Yes.
For the, for opportunity for the mayor to swear in our new Canine.
Outstanding, good.
How's your dog talk?
And he can sit there right, right with John, who's going to conduct our meeting. Saying nothing further, I'm going to adjourn us at 6:39. Thank you.